Notice of this meeting was provided to the Barnesville News and Courier News filed with municipal clerk and posted on municipal bulletin board on December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Please stand and pledge their allegiance. Welcome to the April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Barnesville Borough Council. This meeting is being conducted in person in the council chambers in Borough Hall, and it is being broadcast live on YouTube and on Zoom to make it as convenient as possible for residents to attend the meeting. Members of the public who are here in person and those attending remotely on Zoom will be given the opportunity to comment at appropriate times during the meeting in accordance with the following guidelines. Members of the public will be allowed to speak during the open sessions and during formal public hearings on the agenda, including public hearings on ordinances. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker, which will be monitored and enforced by the Borough Clerk. Comments containing offensive, profane, or indecent language or language constituting hate speech will not be permitted. Remote participants will be muted unless they are unmuted by the clerk, and remote participants will not be able to unmute themselves. The clerk will mute remote speakers at the expiration of their three minutes of allotted time, or if they make any inappropriate or offensive comments. All speakers, whether in person or on Zoom, shall state their names and addresses before making their comments. Speakers on Zoom shall activate their cameras so that they can be seen by members of the governing body. Failure of the governing body to provide a live broadcast of this meeting or technological problems encountered during the course of the meeting that affect remote viewing and/or participation will not invalidate this meeting or any action taken, including but not limited to the adoption of any ordinance resolution or motion. All right, we do not have any presentations. We do have minutes to approve of March twenty-seventh and April tenth. Do I have a motion? I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Which one, remember?
The last one.
Eight percent, yeah. All right. Moving on to ordinances. Oh, no, open session, sorry. Open session for any items that are not listed for a public hearing. So if someone would like to speak, please come up to the X, raise your hand. Olivia, stand on the X over here.
Hi. Hello, everybody.
Olivia.
Okay, so I am here, Olivia Manning, fifth floor, but I'm here on downtown Barnesville. April thirtieth through May sixth is National Small Business Week. And of course, we'll be doing some promotions and all that fun stuff, but I am here to request some permission for a slight extension of the sidewalk sale option. I don't believe anyone's physically going to be selling outside, but we're offering businesses two options because some can do one, some can do the other. So we'd like to do main course, evening time slot. Ordinance was up to six P M. I'm wondering if it's okay if we do up to eight. We'll also do it on Saturday. There's no changes there. Also wondering if we would be able to have a spot in Fenway Park. Have a little bit of music playing, especially on a Saturday. Fenway Park, sorry, that's what I call it.
I heard Fenway, I'm like, wow.
Oh, I was there in March, so. Fenway Park, just to show people that we're there, balloons, a little bit of music, just sort of engaging with the public. They're like, hey, you know, it's all business week, go shopping, all that fun stuff. So maybe we can go there.
Are we okay with that?
Yeah, we have to make a motion to approve.
Surprise that it ends at six o'clock.
It's nine to six.
Yeah, I know, yeah, yeah.
Jack, do you need a motion or can we just?
If you have a question, we should probably consider it. Many ordinance.
Yeah, I think that's a little archaic.
And it doesn't have to go past eight or nine. I would say nine is probably the latest.
Or even the ball, something, but.
Well, even the ball, I think it goes past nine. I don't think anyone wants to do a sidewalk sale, although we are still. So during the times that you never feel.
I'll ask you about the Halloween specifically, or do you try to do something as well? Maybe there's a full revision.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well. Wave it for this one.
I would give Donsonburg a good deal to extend the sidewalk sale hours as requested by Olivia.
Awesome. All in favor?
Aye.
So, and to use Fenway Park, yes.
Yes.
You can get the Fenway Park and stuff.
So we'll just do a revision of their ordinance as well. Change the hour.
We're doing it to eight, nine?
Right.
Nine.
We also have to make an ordinance, nineteen sixty.
Okay, wherever it says that, yeah. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard? Chris?
I'm gonna stand, okay.
Yeah, on the X, just so the people at the house.
Yes, okay. I am Chris Harold. I live at Long Winds of the Lane in Mid-Minister, New Jersey. I am the owner of Linebook Properties. It has block seventy, lot two, within the Quimby redevelopment zone. And I'm here mostly tonight for the Palmer project. But it's been a year now, and it's really, I don't really know what's going on with the Quimby redevelopment. Who is the developer? Who is the one that's the son that is going to be developing currently the Quimby redevelopment zone?
Actually, this is a time for public comment. It's not a Q and A, but our developer is advanced at the moment, but right now there is no progress on that.
Okay, I'll leave it to comments then. If he's still the developer, then there was certain items that he had to accomplish regarding the developer's agreement, which was signed in January two thousand twenty-two, or over a year past that. And there's like fifteen, I have the developer's agreement here, there's like fifteen or so items that he was supposed to have accomplished during that time. Had any of them been, and I don't believe anything has been accomplished. So all the people in that zone, or many people in the zone that I've been in contact with, have had a lot of angst during this year. We're sort of stuck, not being able to do anything. Yeah, I have two vacant spaces. I've had many tenants express interest, but they all back away because they don't think that they can go ahead, because they're still concerned about condemnation. I know you all say that there's no condemnation, but this developer's agreement still in section two A says there's possibility of eminent domain. So we're all kind of stopped in the middle of doing anything. You know, no one wants to put money into their businesses because they might lose it. You know, the tenants are still concerned they're going to be kicked out. And I know everybody says there's no condemnation, but it's still in here. So people in the zones want to have this resolved, but he hasn't made any of these commitments that is stated in this. He should be eliminated from being a developer in that zone. And we would like this too. We've been very patient in trying to get this resolved. And it doesn't seem it has been resolved, so we would like this to be taken up. And probably can't do it this meeting, but should be within the next two meetings to get this resolved, so everybody can go on about their business and, you know. Get their life back. That was my comment.
Thank you, Chris. And I believe we have the, our redevelopment committee, that's their first task, is to assess where we are with that contract and make a recommendation to the council. Anyone else from the public like to be heard on something other than what we have public hearings on? Carrie?
Hi, Erin Hazelton, Linebook Road. As the weather gets better and we're starting to get ready for the outdoor dining season, I note that we have an ordinance that says that there's got to be a bollard up or some kind of area delineating the outdoor dining. And beyond that, there's got to be four feet of sidewalk. I just noticed as I go around town that there are businesses that there's no way there's four feet. Particularly since I'm not sure if the four feet would include the curb, which is about six inches and is not always flush. And I'm worried about people with strollers or people with movement disabilities, and goodness knows wheelchairs. It would be really difficult for them to get by. So I think on the front end, it's important to set this, that the standard is real and that they really need to comply. Otherwise, as we have more businesses and more restaurants, if we don't enforce it now, we're just going to have a cascading amount of people that are going to say, well, he's doing it, so therefore I can do it. And I think we should nip it in the bud and make sure that everybody's complying with the ordinance that we have to make sure that they can get by.
Yeah, that was a good point, Carrie. Well, it actually.
We're working on it. We are working on it right now. It's part of it on the agenda tonight, and more information that will come to council shortly.
I don't see anybody on. I can't see that. Okay, anyone else in the audience wish to be heard on anything? Then I will close the public hearing. We will move on to ordinance twenty twenty-three, nineteen sixty, which is the permanent redevelopment plan for thirty-five, thirty-nine Olka Square and five miles down the road. I was at the planning board meeting last week. It was a good discussion about the plan. It did get, I know I always hate the way they phrase this, it was approved as being not inconsistent with the master plan. But the planning board did send on some recommendations, which have been reviewed by the planner, and most of which, I think, have been incorporated into the plan, so that we reviewed each of them as they went through. I don't know if you want to do this, your comments, so how they were put in.
Good evening. So there were twenty comments or recommendations as the call from the planning board. Overall, thirteen of them were accepted, put in, changes were made in the draft before you. Three really consisted of codes, fire station codes and things of that nature, or ordinances, such as the outdoor dining and the overall housing. So they were really open to the purpose of the council, so they were put into the plan for the planner. One dealt with the survey as to the lot size that's left, so they're going to figure out the site plan. Two dealt with the plan itself, public benefits and things of that nature, and explanation and then that. Also with the density, the planner felt there was enough information in the beginning of the plan as to the purpose of the plan, why you're doing the plan, that it required nothing more. Left out was the suggestion about, I think, probably number nineteen on the list, about Bob Brightley having control of the location of the driveway. He offered a comment at the planning board that he didn't want that control, it's not his control, that's really a co-worker deal. But because of where the driveways are, there's a higher authority that will work with. So there was no change here in that one. If you wanted to read each one, or want to review, or how to fix, I can, but that's really the gist of it.
The net-net is it's coming back.
The net-net is you have a updated plan that cleans up a lot of little language issues. Jack and I discussed this. There was no major variation that would require the back of the planning board. The bulk standards, right, to use the size, the setbacks, the density, all the real big items were not changed by the recommendations and were not changed, other than the parking, which is one of them. There was an additional parking requirement put in. So as a result of that, it needs to get reintroduced as the amended version tonight. Anthony has a copy of this. He can then publish it. That will be in the public two weeks, or until May, if my math is correct, it's two weeks, for another public hearing on this. I can hear you to vote on it. So the action that's being asked me tonight is to introduce it as amended. We'll reintroduce it as amended and hold the final hearing on it on May eighth, but there's no need for it to be amended.
Yeah, thanks. I think you can move to amend the ordinance.
Correct.
Continue the public hearing on the ordinance as amended. As Joe said, all the changes were recommendations by the planning board, so we don't have any need to go back to the planning board for that.
Right, and that's considered, what you, one couple of changes you made are substantial enough that we need to.
Yeah, the parking one is a new additional term.
Do you just stop at the parking one?
So the challenge with stuff in the planning board for those who aren't there, there was no standard for a restaurant, and that would make it very problematic at the back end for zoning officer to determine or the planning board to determine.
There's across the board, one you're going to determine square feet, right, so that was organized, but not specifically for a restaurant.
Correct, and restaurants are per seat. There's a typo in there right now. That's, that says per seat, not per square. But right now, the revised plan says one per four hundred square feet, it's one per four seats.
I believe that was supposed to be two, if I recall correctly from the planning board.
No, it's a recommendation that came from them.
No, I know that, but they put in there. That's not what was said at the actual meeting. If we go back, that's, Warner said that's not what the committee.
That's what I received from Frank. So that addition just clarifies that so should any restaurants show up there and sort a C O, there's a standard to be applied. Whether or not they can deviate from that standard, they would have to get permission to do it.
I'd be interested, I mean, since we're going to have an extra meeting, look at this, to note the thirteen and three, like, what was incorporated?
Of course, yeah.
Consider, I know there's some stuff.
Agreement versus the plan, yeah.
Yeah, a document was sent to you, which would be that had the planners done it, that was added and what wasn't. I think it was. Yeah, they're not.
Also, Joe, I have requested that the site plan, the renovation plan, besides the planning board prior to the meeting, and was told that it would, and it was not. So the planning board did not review the complete information from this project.
No, they received a copy of the concept plan.
The concept plan, they did not get the other plans. I had asked for the other plans. So you got the concept plans that were in, that was in the newspaper.
The regular, and the floor plan.
Yes.
Yeah, there is no full site plan.
Site plan is a whole other process. There is the elevation plan they did not get. That was, that was in the paper also.
I'm just telling you what was.
Yeah. And basically, their job is simply to see if it's compliant with the master plan, not review the actual site plan. That'll come later. So, thank you.
So, Joe, one thing to consider, as I review, because obviously it agrees during the planning board meeting. They have to have, when we get three o'clock in the morning. I did was review the planning board. One of the things that I thought of, and I'm just going to mention this in case. As, so the four seats per one, I believe, was the old ordinance parking requirements started to call back. One of the things that the planning board did, which I reported, I'm saying this right, reported it. If the condition was met, so one in the parking spot for four seats, it could have zoning officer group approval and not go for that particular condition with the planning board for any need. Yes, I consider.
But that's, that's traditional, if I show up with a fit out after building's done, five years now, a different restaurant comes or whatever, they pull up the zoning, and the zoning officer makes that determination. It's always the zoning officer that makes the determination as whether or not you need a zoning board, planning board. I thought I saw when you had to go back to the planning board for the restaurant use, only if you needed use variance. There we go.
So, and just for point of clarification, I don't think the current zoning that's there does a per-seat calculation, it's per-square foot, looking at it right now. I think that there's a, you have to submit a seat plan for a restaurant, and where to prove it, but it doesn't specifically specify four seats, two seats, or whatever.
The process will always be any new occupant of any building.
They'll have to.
Sure, always makes the first stop a new zoning officer, says this is what I want to do. They go with the plan, and they determine whether or not it complies.
Right.
They have that right, and they've got determination. If they find that they need relief or it doesn't comply, they're then sent to the appropriate board. The reason why this need to be added, without that, the zoning officer wouldn't know what to do because there's no standard to be applied. So now there's a standard.
Thank you.
Okay, so we need to have a motion to.
I want to reintroduce, introduce the plan as amended for planning board comments for review in two weeks, which is what day is it?
May.
May, yeah. So technically, what we're doing is moving to continue the public hearing on the ordinance in connection with the amended redevelopment plan. And for the hearing, we continue to ask the mayor, eight meetings, could not further notice.
But there'll be a public hearing tonight?
It's up to me.
Yeah.
I mean. But the thing is, the public doesn't have the current plan.
Correct.
But if they have comments about it in general, we can certainly entertain those. So if anyone would like to be heard on.
We need to move the.
Oh, we did. Oh, I thought you.
It wasn't cited.
Okay, so it's introduction, it's just an all in favor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, I guess you want to speak.
Yeah.
Good very well, I have one on one question. I want to discuss parking.
Again, this is not questioning either. This is just comments.
As we know, our municipality is in trouble when it comes to parking. It is the Wild West out there, and it creates problems for all the tenants, all the businesses, and anyone coming to town. If you're coming into town to pick your kids up, you can't. If you're going to a certain spot picking up food, parking a car, onto a two, and walking into the space. So all I want to say is that when I see new properties being built, we should adhere to our parking ordinances on what's new. Not one and a half, not one and a quarter, not whatever. It says two, two should be built into the new projects. And we should go back to every single property that is doing illegal parking and straighten all of that out like we did years ago with the permits and a person that walked around the town and marked the tires. We're at a point where it is critical, someone's going to get hurt, and whatever. Now I hear we're one and a half. The restaurants are not going to be covered. You tell me if I'm wrong, I'm just telling you, because it would come back. So the restaurant has to provide it, the retail has to support it. And there has to be two parking spaces on that property. The building has to be set at the right distance from the property lines for maintenance and what have you. So I'm just saying, all of these things have to be looked at. The buildings that are on two oh two, come off the bridge, going up two oh two, have to go, or that property cannot be built on. The trucks come over the bridge. Even today, there's single axle trucks delivering soda with a seventy-foot rig. Have you seen it? They climb the curb. They just passed the signal light. And then they ride the sidewalk all the way up past the two buildings. Those buildings have to go. The state has to be involved. Transit has to be involved. Don't shortcut this. I can tell you stories, and Jack knows them, of all the problems that were created by boards in this town that cost us hundreds and millions of dollars. That center of town has to be looked at. The lanes have to be widened to the new specs, to the new turning radiuses for the trucks, and new crosswalks have to be put in. And let's not build a building and build a complex without that. Now, I saw the engineers out for the other guy that wants to build eighty-some units. So that's going to be great on Church Street, not Wesley. We better get a handle on it now, on what's going, where we're going to go, how we're going to do it. This town is the greatest town around. My grandfather came here in nineteen oh three, and they built the town. The people in this town are unbelievable. The kids, you go around to what we built. We built the fields. You know the town and the school. Never built anything. We built it. Our kids are out there. They love one another. They teach one another. The parents do that. Don't screw it up. Or I'm going to be back here every freaking night. You'll be haunted by me.
Anyone on the, nobody on Zoom? Jeff?
This is, you're still doing public comment about the Palmer.
Yeah.
Seems like the X is farther. I'd like to be closer to my council people. Jeff, I'm in eighteen, so I'm. There's no doubt in my mind that the corner, right there, the traffic light, up and down there, it needs to be remediated. It's too narrow. It's not safe. You can't get a wheelchair to fly there, for example. I'll agree with that. And I think that that parking lot there at the Palmer property is underutilized. When everyone, Councilman O'Dea and I were on the council, we went by there, took pictures in the morning, in the afternoon, to show how the cars work there. So that could be remediated too, but I don't think the solution to fixing those problems is the project that's being proposed now. And so I wanted to just arise to agree with Councilwoman Greenfield's comments from the meeting before last, and I think she's spot on. I think the project's too large. It may be not inconsistent with the master plan, use their language, but that doesn't mean it's consistent with our vision and with the characteristics of the town. Those are not necessarily the same thing. I think if you look at all the work that we went into creating a street skate, for example, I don't see how that matches it, at least not what was drawn. But I think my reason for rising today is not because I'm going to change anybody's mind. I think, frankly, it's a done deal. What I wanted to do is raise the issue that I think one of the previous speakers already did, that don't let advanced real be off the hook. I think the project on Quimby Lane is stalled. My fear is that they'll develop the Palmer property, and then they'll throw their hands up and say, we can't do Quimby, which really translates to they can't make enough money to do it, and then they'll walk away from it. I urged the council to not let that happen. Quimby is the eyesore that's holding back the vitality of the town, not Olka. And so no one should lose sight of that.
Anyone else? Anybody on Zoom? And again, you know, you will have another opportunity on the eighth afternoon post, or you.
I just want to say one other thing. Line of sight, without those buildings leveled, you will not be able to have the proper line of sight up and down two oh two, or on my map road to get out of there, in there and out of there. Those buildings have to go.
All right, then I'll close the public hearing on this ordinance, and it'll be continued on May eighth.
Mayor, can I ask Joe a few questions? Could we go on if it's okay? Yeah, I was going to just, there's a couple of things in there that I would give it if it's.
Okay, which, Joe?
You. Yeah, Joe DeMar. It would be very helpful, particularly, I was going to ask this before we have a tonight, so it would be helpful to consider it right now. I just want to first lay out the exact steps, as I understand it, reading it, and it came up tonight. So obviously, the next meeting, we're going to consider the development plan, which is basically an overlay of the zoning ordinance. That will have, we have had a public hearing tonight, has another public hearing coming. After that, based on that, there'll be a negotiated contract with the developer. That's developer agreement. That comes back to council as well. And then following that, once that's agreed, assuming it's agreed, and assuming. And then following that, once that's agreed, assuming it's agreed and assuming everything passes. Then they go to the planning board and sort of follow the normal process based on that agreement and the. Um, and the plan. Is that correct?
Yes.
And does that have a public hearing at that point too?
The. Plan is going to be restated, so it's already known. So, um. A developer has not been designated. I know we all know who owns the property, but that has not yet been done. With that designation does come a redevelopment agreement, which will have. Extra precautions, timelines, and things of that nature, public candidates and all that displayed out in there. Uh, F roads and things of that nature. Once they've satisfied those two requirements, they then are free to utilize the redevelopment plan. Because the back of the redevelopment plan, it has the administration portion. You cannot avail yourself of any of this if you don't select a redevelopment. And if you don't name a redevelopment and if you don't have a redevelopment agreement. So we can go through all of this. And it can be determined redevelopment agreement that we can't meet our minds. Project doesn't move forward. After that is done, they are then free to go get a site plan.
Um, and we just came up last meeting, but if we want an additional public hearing. Or a public presentation of it, we can put that into the agreement.
Yeah, what was added in this, um, agreement? Um, or in this plan is that prior to, um, their site plan application or anything else. They have to provide that concept plan here first.
Yep.
Um, to this council. Uh, which is not normally required, but is in there now in the redevelopment plan. And it comes here through your comments and criticism when they're to that nature before they actually form an entity.
Um, thank you.
And the planning board will also have public opportunity, yes?
Correct. I mean, the planning board has to then make sure it complies with their standards and and they're required.
Will the public have opportunity to comment and reflect change in the plan that we just said?
In the plan or in the. The, see, plan's a dangerous word or it's a very technical word. So in the redevelopment plan, that sets the zoning. And what comes up, the zoning, yes, you always get a comment on. You know, can you move a tree, can you change the color scheme, can you, you know, add more windows, do more particular, right? There's there's some subjectivity built into these redevelopment plans with regards to soundproofing. Um, design standards and all of that.
Um, Joe, is there, I I was, when I was reading through, there seemed to be some. I'm going to say inconsistencies. I think this, these were identified in the planning board. Which, by the way, I I'm very grateful for the planning board and the revitalization committee for sending those comments. There were like a lot of great comments in there. I had questions around the actual. Height and the setback required. Was that, were those clarified in that, uh, what you said this afternoon?
There only, there was no recommendation regarding setbacks.
Okay.
Made by the planning board, when we received those twenty west had nothing to do with regards to setbacks.
I didn't see.
Reminding to get back to the difference in the setback. So the interest in the board is. Your current zoning has a two foot setback. Um, this plan has a zero, so it's giving two feet, we're not firmly, a lot line. Um. Maximum building stories in your current zoning, not planning zoning, was four. Maximum building height was forty. Um. A maximum lot coverage is ninety. Lot coverage is the same in the redevelopment plan as this. The setback is a difference of two feet. Um, and the stories is four stories, but the height is the same. It's forty.
Actually, no, the height was forty five in the current zone. Was it shorter or is there some type?
Forty five, uh, because of Eve, what I compared there.
Okay, got it.
And still. Yeah.
You keep worrying. You do such a great job.
So, so the challenge was, um, and Bob Riley testified that the planning board made some comments. Is that roadway slopes. Um, so there's never. You're never at the same elevation anywhere on the front sidewalk and back when you walk around. So blended medium or the average was four oh eight. So to make life easier for everyone, we use four oh eight. As where you measure the forty feet from and where you measure the forty five and things of that nature. And put a cap on that to say, regardless of that, it can't be taller than fifty five.
It's a ten foot drop, okay.
It's a drop. Um, that makes sense. It's a little complicated, but you needed a. Base point, otherwise no one can agree how tall.
I did have a question and somebody brought it up, the line of sight around the corner. Would that be articulated in the traffic study or does that not get articulated? How does that?
Um, your engineer at the end of the day, meaning your engineer, Bob Riley, is going to take a look at things of that nature. Your traffic engineer should have more than want a higher one, is going to look at turning radiuses, lines, side of the fence of that nature. Um, the line of sight. Could get better because than what's currently there, because the sidewalk right now is. Can feed maybe gray someplace, it'll be nine, so from curve, and the curved line is not moving. That there will be nine feet, so it will be a five foot additional view line.
Okay. And then I, um, when does a pilot get discussed at that point?
That's up to you. Uh, traditionally, a pilot comes into. An application is after a developer is designated and after a plan is developed. Um. Technically, it's not supposed to get approved until the site plan is actually approved, or at least the site plan is filed. Because you need to know. Um, a unit mix, a unit count, sizes, projected rents, there's a lot of calculations that go in. So if and when they apply for a pilot, uh, we would not do it until there was a site plan.
Is that something that you can allude to in the contract that we develop to get to that point?
In in moving in terms of, um. That that is part of the the. Requirements or the wish? Particularly developers, any redevelopment area that will work on. Um, that is that they are free to apply for one and that you will consider it, which is pretty much what the law says. Right, they apply for it, they have to consider it. I do not find if you cannot find in one agreement another ordinance. Um, so it just says that we understand that you might apply for one. Uh, you're free to apply for one and that you'll consider it. Pilot laws such that if someone qualifies and they submit it, you have to take action. You either have to grant it or not. You can't just not.
And then one, just final question. When we were, when we originally made this an area redevelopment in September twelfth of last year. Number of council members, myself included, are interested in plan for local businesses, um, of how. You know, basically how they would take care of local businesses, what the, um, what the viability plan would be considering changes. It may not be as, well, I won't even say that.
I mean, the current tenants.
The current tenants.
Yes.
Yeah.
So you can put.
That's something I can put into the.
Yes.
Agree, okay.
Yeah. Um, they need to present a re relocation.
Yeah, so I I can tell you, I'm still in favor of that heading of the plan.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know how we're supposed to be talking about it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great. So the public hearing on this is closed, so moving on. Um, I will open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty three nineteen sixty one and ordinance amended salary ordinance twenty twenty three nineteen fifty five. Would anyone in the public like to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. You want to move it?
And move to that ordinance twenty twenty three dash nineteen sixty one on final reading and adopted, published.
Roll call please.
The timeline?
Yes.
Is it breathing?
Yes.
Is it breathing?
Yes.
Is it breathing?
Yeah.
Is there an hour?
Yes.
Is it now?
Yes.
I will open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty three nineteen sixty two, repealing local pay to play ordinance that has been preempted by. Public law twenty twenty three, chapter thirty, and amending chapter two, the borough code was titled in this version. Um. And this we have no input on. This only includes our local ordinance and I think I shared with everyone what, um, Lee's stand was on this and. The governor signed it, so it's a done deal.
Yeah, really all we're doing is kicking you out of our court, because you can't enforce it in any way.
Right. So would anyone in the public like to be heard on this? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Uh, Jay, you want to move that one?
No, particularly.
Yes.
Um. I moved past ordinance twenty twenty three dash nineteen sixty two on final reading and adopted, published.
Yeah, same.
Come on, tell me what you said. I think we talked about.
I'll second it till we can vote on it.
Well, it's really, it's. It doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Kevin's thinking, oh. The principal say, the boss.
I mean, this eliminates.
I have a common policy, yeah.
Please, Jeff.
My common vision, I don't think, I think you're right, but you you may just confuse people, believing they're good.
So, um, maybe people will think our laws are stricter.
Right, right.
So like.
Mary Mark.
I, right. Those who didn't see, Jack sent us, uh, basically articles and all about it. It was excellent. Thank you, Mayor. She passed on the municipalities. Opinion, which were strongly against it, and so was public citizen, all the, you know, voting, uh, rights groups. I mean, I know sometimes that you just have to make it to the ballot vote. It doesn't matter, but like this is. I think particularly now, considering all development in town, like this is stripping away all local pay to play ordinances. It's raising the amount that this is just can give to political parties, individual candidates. It's, um, doubles contribution balls. I mean, it does a lot of stuff that like those bipartisan outrage. So again, it's in, hey, we're a small town, you know, I'm sure it's not going to. You know, we're for threatening that burn and feel it's going to stand here, but. Sometimes they think a stand matters and it's weakening our local laws and I don't think anybody here really. I mean, I don't know. You speak, I know I'm.
I am true.
Should we table it and?
Why don't you start voting down and it's just as low as we started.
Yeah, we're down.
All right, so we have a second, uh, roll call, please.
Is it now?
Yes.
Is there an hour?
No.
Oh. Is it now?
No, I said no.
No. Is there an hour?
No.
Is it breathing?
No.
Is it breathing?
No.
Is breathing?
No.
Is it breathing?
No.
All right. Say that, really.
Yeah.
Do we want to do, uh? Send something?
Uh, I think we send something to our, our state.
Saying that we, yes.
Okay, we did.
We will not, we never feel.
Very well was wondering where I was at, Jeff.
Okay, um, Diane, you want to just move this one, the next one?
Or we're pulling this one?
Oh, this one we're pulling, that's right, sixty four. No, 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 this is, this is the one we're pulling. We're pulling the other sixty six.
It's already up.
It's already gone.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I I read that ordinance twenty twenty three dash nineteen sixty four, an ordinance establishing a fee for the registration of certificates of insurance by owners and business owners. And rental units in compliance with New Jersey S A. Forty A. Ten A dash two, be introduced by title, pass the first reading, publish according to law, and then. Public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at seven o'clock P M, Monday, May eighth, twenty twenty.
We we do run the books.
Why?
Because the zoning officer already notified people.
That there was.
There is no date. So we really can't go back.
This is for a good feeling, we can't do that.
Right, well, we can.
Yeah, they've already been told, never mind.
Second.
So.
Uh, we just know. There, no one's seconded it, so.
Okay, so let it go.
Good, sorry.
Moving on to resolutions, we have twenty three one oh one, or the shortest resolution was ever since one forty oh four.
Go to the seventh reading.
I know, why? Um, Alan, you want to move it?
Sure. I moved that resolution's twenty three one oh one to twenty three one abbreviated up.
Second.
Roll call please.
Is there an hour?
Yes.
Is it breathing?
Yeah.
Is it breathing?
Yes.
Is it breathing?
Yes.
Is there an hour?
Yes.
Is it now?
Yes.
All right, moving on to reports, um, my report, uh, we did have a parade committee meeting last month, but we have another one. This Wednesday, no, this week. Anyway, projects have been made on a grid. Um, on the twelfth, I, the twelfth through to fifteenth, I attended the New Jersey Conference of Mayor's Conference in Atlantic City. Um, and I was elected to a board member of that organization. Lots of good.
Congratulations.
Lots of good, uh, information, panel discussions on, um. Energy tax receipts, where that's going, the unique has a letter that we're encouraging every mayor to sign. So that we get that money back. They did give us. Put some in the budget last year. If not, there is no budget line for it this year, so we're trying to urge them to. They keep changing the name and moving it around. So we want to make sure we get our energy tax receipts. Um, it also talked about the future health benefits, affordable housing. Um, the new stormwater regulation, so it was a lot of, a lot of good information. Um, the governor was a keynote speaker. Talked about liquor law reform. We'll see how far that goes, um, but he's really pushing it. Uh, then we had an opportunity to meet with the governors, having a roundtable, at roundtables. I participated in, uh, the county stigma free event. Um, I was one of the speakers. To encourage other municipalities to take the stigma free initiative. Uh, sign a pledge. Uh, it's really trying to remove a simple around mental health. And substance juice disorders, so that people get the help they need. We had a housing committee, we'll hear about that later. Um, on Saturday, I attended the community connection, had a hike at our property on two seventy one. Mine Road. Um, and I just wanted to say a big thank you to the trails committee and to your public works. Our trail, the trails there are in great shape. And then yesterday I went to one up on Clermont. Uh, it's beautiful. They did a great job. It's well marked. You can, you know, it's got rain going up, blue coming down, so you can't get lost. Uh, it's really well done, so thank you for your hard work on that. And Diane, uh, works on the trails commission and Aaron as well, so the, you can carry. Really great job. And if you haven't been on our trails, they're on the website. You can read about them. Some, but that was for community connection, which was a co-sponsored by the mayor wellness committee. Uh, did attend the service for Thompson on Saturday. Really amazing turnout. She was a well, a, a, a wife admired, well respected woman and, uh. Just say up to see her go. Um, I also, I forgot to leave this last meeting. Uh, but we do, we did get our plaque for, um, being a New Jersey helping town to watch, so we now have went from silver to bronze. And I think we're hanging the, uh, we got it, I mean, bronze to silver. We're hanging the banner, uh, either at the pickleball courts or at the church ball, so.
There's the bronze one at the church.
Yeah, that's, so we thought maybe we put this one on the pickleball, so. Next year it's gold, for health and for the goal. Um, and also a reminder that we still have the food, um, food stock campaign going on, so if you want to donate, you might have noticed. When you came in, there was. A couple of boxes with food in it, uh, was collecting food for, as someone said, family food bank. It's a competition among the different municipalities, um, by weight, so buys big bags of rice. They're nice and heavy. And you can drop them off here. I believe the library also has a drop box. Um, yeah, they did participate, which thank you for doing that. And, uh, St. Burns has. A big blue bin outside the parish house that you can, if you drive your body, you can drop them in as well, so. That's my report. Um, I want to say welcome to our new administrator, for those of you that haven't met her. Nancy will just, this is her, uh. Been here one full week, so. Um, I'm not expecting a big report, but just to say hello and how's it going?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, it's been great. Um, thank you all. Thank you for the appointment. Um, as the mayor said, it's been a week and it's been great so far. Um, I spent the week meeting employees and some professionals. Uh, took a tour, a couple tours of the town, beautiful. Um, learned about a lot of the projects that are going on. Uh, it's been, it was a really busy week, um, and met with some of the council people from the mayor, um. And so far it's great, so I'm very happy to be here. I actually have one announcement today, which I thought earlier. Um, that downtown Burnsville was, uh, receiving a grant from Somerset County for sixteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for. Um, a historic walking court. And important to note that out of the. People at a group that receive money, there's with the highest, uh, yeah. Congratulations.
Uh, next we have our department lumping reports. We want to have a motion to accept those.
Oh, we accept those.
Pop back and. All in favor?
All right.
All right, um, I haven't seen any of the community reports that we're supposed to fill out, but I was in there. I didn't see.
Got one from finance the last time.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, we have next tomorrow. Yeah, we haven't had the finance, so public state. Yeah, we haven't had the finance, so public safety. Uh, we have hired a new female police officer who will be starting in July, so we're all happy about that. The committee discussed practical enforcement efforts regarding April distracted driving and maze click it or ticket initiatives. We discussed parking issues and conflicting parking signage in the Burns Avenue area. We'll be looking at signage issue and also how the parking ordinance can be revamped to make it clearer to residents and more enforceable. We talked about the Mount Airy Road Prospect Street intersection. The police did a, uh, police department did a two week study, which they sent to the county engineer to take a look at. To determine if additional signage or other measures would be warranted at that location. Thank you. Uh, finance, you guys are on a good break here.
We are on a break. I will say that at the last. Um, meeting, we talked about the budget presentation, but just to, um, make sure the public knows that we also discussed. Uh, finance and the recreation plan, phases of the recreation plan as requested by council. And, uh, also the boss round with the building game plan there, um, so. You know, I think that those get sent back to the recreation committee.
Yes.
Or is it public works?
Uh, correct.
More.
And the recreation committee sent a real nice letter, but I, I think there's a lot of similarity in everybody that's.
Yeah, I'll, yeah, we're gonna do that.
Um, there were, there were those two things, um, and. And the evidence is that.
Yeah, and thank you for the, uh, the budget presentation. That was really well done, um, and I assume it's on the website now, right? So if anyone missed it, you can look at it on the website. Hello, the video personnel and public works, you said a meeting tomorrow. Right. And the land use, I think we're meeting on Wednesday. And also the Centennial Committee is meeting on Wednesday. Any liaison or concerns? I have. Oh, thank you, I was thinking, speaking, cool. Yeah. Um, the recreation committee met on April eleventh, uh, as far as trails go, the perimeter trail Peters Track. Has been completed more and is open to the public, as the mayor has told you about. Special thanks to John McDowell and the road department for all their help cutting through the thick barberry. And to subcommittee chair Kerry Hazelton and to Aaron Duff for clearing the roots and helping them off the trail. Uh, the Peters Track Trails, which are located at two fifty-one Clermont Road, now have a red in and out trail, which is about. Half mile and a blue perimeter loop trail, which is probably close to three quarters of a mile, so go out and check them out. They're really. Uh, as requested by the council at our April tenth meeting, I reviewed with the recreation committee, the Polo Pavilion drawings and discussed phases one and two of the proposed. Polo ground improvement projects. The committee was asked to provide and writing any questions and recommendations that they had. The report was received today and has been forwarded to all members of council for review. Uh, public works meets tomorrow night and can go through some of the questions and recommendations at that time, and I would. Like to suggest that after incorporating some of the recreation committee's recommendations, that we have a presentation on proposal for the public prior to voting. Um, housing met on April, uh, twenty-first. We discussed potential issues that which needed to be addressed before the detached accessory dwelling ordinance is ready to be introduced. Um, Jack found an unintended, possible unintended consequence, and the committee felt that it was a warrant further review. We also discussed additional recommendations to the outdoor dining ordinance, which will be sent to the council for review shortly. And the committee felt that it was important to get the insurance issue, which is coming later. Uh, in the meeting, um, taking care of immediately, uh, and that the other tweaks to the ordinance could wait. That's it for me, H hacking.
Mayor, do you want to discuss this building and old business, or do you want to do it now?
Discussing here.
Uh, next step.
Um, yeah, we, uh, because we just got the feedback from RAC, so we really haven't had time to look at it. So, and I think part of it is, I want to get, um, Nancy up to speed on, you know, the whole where we are with the, the master plan and how everything fits together. So I think we'll put it off till the next meeting. And we might be able to take care of some of the stuff that's on that list at the public works meeting tomorrow night.
Yeah, I think there's a convergence of the financial issue, right? There's a financial issue. There's a scope scale issue.
Yeah.
So I don't want it just to die in wait for somebody to act.
No, it's not a good die.
Yeah, and I think the financial issue resolved when we laid out how to do it and base it in a way that's not going to, you know, raise that, raise the volume, so.
But recreation did raise some concern, the whole thing, that. Yeah, that we're gonna just discuss this stuff.
We're putting on the agenda for the next.
Yeah, yeah, I think once we go through all their, their list of things and Nancy kind of gets all the background on it.
I still have the hope that we'll get it for footballs, so that helps.
Whatever. The leash shots.
Board of Health?
No, oh, Board of Health, I'm sorry. That would scare me.
Hey. My God, um. So I just want to say Board of Health has their annual report out, and, uh, that was the highlight, and, um, as a reminder for. Um. For residents, the, the, we're the part of Burnsville Township Health Department, which is a contractual agency of six municipalities, so it's a shared service. We pull our resources together. Um, and then obviously there's a board of health that has a health officer, uh, underneath Chair Len Freeman and, um, you know, the council liaison. Um, this is a great report. I encourage everyone to go to the Burnsville Township Health Department website, or you can see it after the meeting. Happy to leave it here, but I want to see it. And it talks about the structure of the Burnsville Health Department, accomplishments two thousand and twenty-two, uh, highlights, uh, the effort to the COVID pandemic. And then talks about the health matters, their newsletter, and gives some highlights there. So just thanks to the Board of Health for all the continued effort, and this is a great summary for residents to. See what both the department itself is doing, what that spare dollars are going to, and what the volunteers who are part of it are doing.
Great, thank you. Um, do you have a specific person that meets with you from Board of Health?
I attend those meetings.
No, no, I mean, from.
Oh, yes, yeah.
One of your staff members.
Tricia Cole.
Is anyone?
Yes, it's been the same one for years and, um.
Would you ask if they could possibly ask someone? Our mayor's always.
Yeah.
I'd love to have their input.
I mean, obviously, we've reached during the planning toward meeting. There's nothing else on the agenda other than we need assistance to review. I wonder if there's nothing popped up that they're needing to.
No, it was took out the whole leaving. Yeah, good discussion. Um.
Environmental Commission. Met on the twelfth. Um, there's also in our agenda, the data review of the home redevelopment and some of the recommendations that they wanted us to do. Um. I'm pretty sure it's in the beginning, but it's not asking me forward to do. Um, the other thing, we had the earthquake cleanup this past Saturday. Yeah, which was awesome. Tons of garbage picked up despite the fact that we had our fifteen of the week before. The parks and, um, baseball field and headquarters all took care and it was very fun. The kids had a great time. Um. We talked about, um, this coming Saturday is the e-waste and styrofoam recycling that's going to be at the high school.
Clean styrofoam.
Clean styrofoam and electronics that we want to get rid of, which is another great way to.
Yeah.
Yeah, just not with them and other. We also talked about some grant opportunities and some kind of streamlined, uh, subcommittees to get those. Um, maximize if we can. And the environmental commission has a survey that they started. I think it starts today.
Yeah. Carry his.
Get a little, yeah, I was there.
So it's basically to gauge what residents want or would be willing to do in terms of environmental recycling waters.
Digital recycling.
So one of the things we talked about was the styrofoam, which, um. Kathy Redling said that Nancy's former position, they did a styrofoam thing, so we're looking into that.
Um.
I think she had a machine, right?
Yeah.
Machine that.
Yeah.
It was seventy thousand dollars, but they made the money back by selling these styrofoam to a vendor who makes. Molding for cruise ships and picture frame. So the machine will pay for itself over.
Right.
You know, uh, hopefully, few years.
Yeah, so it sounded like a good idea. I want to get all the details and we'll probably recommend, you know, like a. Recommendation to what that ends up with, but I definitely just my house with thirty cents, there's a lot of styrofoam that comes with all the. Packaging for stuff nowadays, so. Um, look for that survey. It'll probably be on Facebook. Another thing that they were to ask people if they'd be willing to compost, so maybe people are hesitant to start composting and try to educate people on why that's such a good thing to do. Hello?
Great, thank you. Um, we do have, um, under items of business, the draft ordinance on the outdoor dining. That we, uh, Jeff Farland sent over. Um, that came from the zoning committee. Finally. Yes, um, yeah, that was count ten. Well, this is the one, this is what we pulled because of the fee. Can we just take out the fee?
No.
No, this isn't.
This is not, this is three requires.
Oh, this is.
Residents that try to walk down and provide significant insurance and indemnification.
Different end of this.
And I asked if we put on discussing impossible action. How this is already discussed with the housing committee, and they were in agreement that we should adopt this and then look.
And then.
And Jack, what is the ordinance? What is your assessment of risk here?
Well, it, it is always done, so I don't think it's a bad idea, uh, and it doesn't, it doesn't cost a whole lot, presumably, but they all have.
They could have insurance anyway, yeah.
So, so the community indemnification is.
Right.
Right, but if they have adequate insurance, I mean, next year they're going to play.
But can they truly indemnify us if it's done on a right of way or something?
Well, they caused it, if, if they're negligence, uh, with Kerry Brett earlier.
Yeah.
Less than four feet, if they leave no space and people have to go around in the street. You know, we, we consider they sued for that, uh, and in that case, uh, you know, like I said, if they have adequate insurance. Then, you know, they shouldn't have to.
I, I mean, typically, whole harmless indemnification agreements are, they should be simple.
Yeah.
Oh, great. Is, is this something that can be created in a simple form that's understandable by the business owner without having to hire lawyers and those types of, but I do my best.
Yeah, I think all I have to do is call your insurance company.
Yeah.
That you need is.
And it's a different. I, I, I have no issue, but I just want to make sure.
That I really understand.
So it'd be exactly the required words.
Okay, yes.
Yes. Get a good one, parrot, parrot, parrot.
Yeah, maybe easier for him.
Yeah, yeah, because typically you have an insurance bill.
Uh, so do we want to move that now? Somebody, I'll move. I move that ordinance twenty twenty-three dash nineteen sixty-five, requiring outdoor dining facilities to file a certificate of insurance and. An indemnification agreement with the borough clerk be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and that the public hearing be scheduled for. Uh, a meeting beginning at seven o'clock P M Monday, May eighth, twenty twenty-three. All in favor? Fine, all right, so we got that started.
Can I just go back?
Yeah.
I misspoke that it wasn't a recommendation from the E C, it was. I misread the email. They sent the, the planning board recommendations and just. Kind of like made some comments about which we under those I related to. Which some of them were so.
Yeah. They weren't like the soldiers.
It wasn't just their recommendations, it was their, they got a playing board.
Got it, thank you. Um. I have more items of business. Uh, we have an appointment to take the, it's actually was Dot Pollock's seat on the planning board. Which, um, Terry Thompson was finishing and it runs till the end of December, so, um, I currently correct auto to that position. Um. You have this, the, uh, what do you call it, the, uh, skills. Skills bank and resume in the packet.
Can we mention, I meant something that wrong?
No, you cannot. There's later, there's an open public session later.
Okay.
This not right now. Um. Can you let Frank Matola know that there's a meeting this Thursday?
We move the mayor, that's the mayor.
Thanks for my appointment.
Yes.
Uh, correspondence, we did get a, I think I sent it to everyone, a very nice letter of support from Walter Lane. From the county, um, I know they keep changing his title. Joe, what's his title now, do you know?
Director of Planning and Economic Development at State.
Something like that, yeah, uh, in support of our transit village application, so that was really nice, because those, that helps a lot when you have the county supporting it as well. Um. Christine.
Board of Adjustment, you can.
Oh, yeah, the annual report from the Board of Adjustment. Did anyone have any comments on that? As you recall, we used to have them come and present it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which. We felt it was just easier if they gave us a written one, and if there's any questions or we can review it, um, it's nice to see how many applications. Things through.
It seemed to me, and I didn't have a competitor, the number of applications reviewed by the Board of Adjustment went down. Is that? The correct? I'm, I'm sorry, that's a number of applications heard by the Board of Adjustment went down, started what I remember a couple of years ago.
I don't remember. I think it was pretty much the same, okay?
Yeah, pretty, pretty standard, um.
I only have one kind of question.
Who?
They asked about at the end.
After the zoning.
The ten thousand board members are recommending that to now to see be obtained to utilize to facilitate. Or meetings becoming more electronic based, so that they can have hybrid in-person and remote.
We had it.
We have.
It's here.
Can they use it?
They can.
There are reasons why they, uh, because that's one of the.
No, they, they, the board has not taken the action to become.
Oh, because they're saying.
Person, hybrid. Yeah, the planning board, Board of Adjustment is still me remotely, so. Maybe they don't realize.
I can tell you the planning board we discussed it, and I think we want to maintain the current status quo.
Well, maybe you, like, if you're on the planning board, maybe their rules for holding could be different than ours, like Jack could be at. The meeting on Zoom is still being the bulk of it, whereas we have a different.
Well, they're these are new, yeah, they're fluid.
Yeah.
But if they just, it sounds.
Yeah, they still don't know, yeah.
Yeah, each board does its own, yeah. Um. Also, they mentioned something about the relages, and you see that, um. That we clarify the language in the zoning code.
Yeah, I did not.
I didn't either. Oh, you know, because I guess they've been getting more requests as people collect cars and want to have.
It is, so we don't have a liaison, and if we want clarification on point C or three. What's our mechanism for getting clarification?
But for that, I, I would forward the planning board, that recommendation is a planning recommendation.
Because I think.
Yes.
Okay.
The question is it for garage or for parking places?
Yeah, I'll, I'll forward it to.
But it's garage is a garage considered.
Structure.
Yeah, an additional structure.
Yeah.
The same, yeah.
Us to specify a limit.
Right, but it's for garage spaces per structure on a lot, or if there's four garages per lot?
Um, Anthony.
So if they have multiple.
For all, I think the correspondence is part of the overall agenda package.
Okay.
Can you send the just that bit to Frank? I guess on my behalf.
Frank would. Done this, um.
Oh, is Frank, Frank. Okay, that's right, I'll, I'll talk to Frank, I forgot.
It does both. Yeah. Okay. Christine, we are, uh, switching as liaison with Jay. So, um. We are move that. I'll lose your point, Christine Zamora and Environmental Commission Liaison, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, you got it, Josh. Uh, any new business? Is there anything we haven't covered? Okay, moving on to our second open session. Again, please remember this is, um, an opportunity for the public to make comments. It's not a Q and A. Um, anything about anything that we want to say, just for your minutes and give your name and address.
I like that.
Christine, yeah, but back on the S.
Want to revisit this auto nomination? And I know the auto view, I've, I've been to their seminars for many years, and I, um, I don't know if this gentleman is part of that group. Um, if he is, um, I, I think the public needs to know if he has any conflict of interest regarding the development.
needs to know if he has any conflict of interest regarding the developer for AR Queen B or the Palmer um, group. Because if he does, he should not be on the council. That's my comment. If anybody investigates, uh, uh, no sign of question, but I, I think it should be investigated if he has any relationship with or COVO or any entity that he's, Mr. Coach that was involved.
Usually if somebody is on a board and has a relationship, they refuse themselves or their, their situation.
They have to.
They have to.
Yes, but you know, they can recuse themselves, you know, in the meetings here or not. They, they can still consult on the side and, 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 and get leverage that way.
Anyone else? Yes, oh, great. This call, sorry.
No, anyone that I worked with, I want to start.
I'd like to comment on the subject of SIS.
Amen.
Oh, sorry. Frank Dunapoli, forty-six Maple Village Court, commercial property owner, business owner. I'd like to comment on SIS special interest.
Improvement.
Special improvement designation. Since they're sitting through two meetings on that, I think the timing is all wrong to get that designation. We need to fill the vacant buildings and attract new businesses first. A new tax could deter new businesses from coming to town, but find a place where they don't have to pay extra tax.
Thank you.
I think that might be a good idea down the road when we build some of these buildings, but right now it could be determined.
Thank you. Jerry? Okay, thank you.
And Hazelton Minder Road, uh, I'd like to take a step and propose that we name the parks that we put the trails on. Uh, we've got two fifty-one Clermont and two seventy-one Mine Brook. Mine Brook, pardon, Mine Brook is, you know, a half a mile away from that. It may have been closer back in the seventeen hundreds. Uh, we have two sixty-seven Mine Brook. And there's a lot of confusion with that. Luckily, I feel like we already have a name for the property on Clermont Road, which we've had for fifty some odd years. That is the Peters track located at two fifty-one Clermont Road. And that would be Peters without an apostrophe because that's the name of the family that gave that land.
I'm gonna run it faster.
Well, I looked it up to make sure that they were, you know, that they were the Peters, not the Peter family. So, yeah. As to the second park, um, and obviously the land was Lenny and Lennox Land in the early going, but when, when there was a charter from William Penn, it went to the Kirkpatrick family. The Kirk Patricks occupied a house on the opposite side of two oh two. They have it, it's still there. It's a stone and frame cottage with a frame addition. That is a seventeen fifty house. And when um, the Kirkpatrick son married the girl who may have lived in my house, he built them a cottage which we then sold when we had, we got that property. That was the second Kirkpatrick property. They were big walkers and they would walk everywhere. They never, you know, obviously they didn't have cars, but they, they chose to walk to church. They, they went to the Baskin Rich Presbyterian Church and they never missed a disturbance. So we've got these lighting parks. And I think that park should be called Kirkpatrick Park. And that we, you know, I, I present that to you as an idea that, that we should, we should name a Kirkpatrick Park and we should go to Peters track for the property on Clermont Road.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. No, that's a great idea. Do you have Carrie? Um, can you maybe write up something on history, sort of, yeah?
Yep, I know, thank you, Steve.
Uh, anyone online want to speak? I don't see anybody up there. Anybody else in the audience? Nothing?
Don't say anybody's hand up online.
Alright, and I will close the public session. We are moving on to executive. We might have a motion to, uh, I don't think, are we coming back out or not? Do you think we would? No? Okay, I'll make the motion to move to executive. Oh, sorry. Paul and Jay?
Hi.
Alright, thank you for the thought. Yes, great.